Good evening and welcome to the, uh, our Planning Commission meeting tonight. I would ask all of you to please stand, remove any non-military caps, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we do have one excused absence tonight. Commissioner Kofar is just a tad bit under the weather. Um, and thank, I thank him for not coming and having the rest of us be a tad bit under the weather, so appreciate that sensitivity. Um, that's the, so, Mr. Attorney, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, so let me go into the preamble and let's get started. We have quite a few items tonight, so, uh, the sooner we get to them, the quicker we can decide and move on. So, uh, our Planning Commission advises City Council on applications for rezoning, land development code amendments, street closures, and long-range plans and policies. The Commission holds legislative hearings, meaning that anyone wishing to speak on a request may do so. The Commission issues a recommendation based on consistency of the request with the intent and purpose of the Land Development Code and consistency of a request with the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and other relative relevant adopted plans and policies. All matters requiring Commission action shall be presented to the Commission by the planning staff and the applicant. In situations where planning staff is the applicant, there will only be one presentation. And city, uh, city staff will make the first presentation, the applicant will make the second presentation. Both presentations are limited to five minutes, and to maintain an orderly meeting, all presentations shall proceed without interruption unless the Commission desires to intervene with questions or comments. Um, at that point, then, we would get to a public hearing, and the Chair will open the public hearing for those physically present wishing to speak about an item. Those in favor of the item will be heard first, followed by those opposed to the item. Ten minutes will be allowed to either side. A staff member will track the ten-minute time periods. Ms. Painter, are you the timer tonight? Thank you. Um, will track the time periods and notify the speaker at the five-minute, one-minute, and then verbally call time when it expires. The Chair, uh, in their discretion, may extend these time periods. All groups, organizations, neighborhoods, or similar associations desiring to comment are asked to appoint one person to present their concerns or point of view to the Commission on each agenda item. The public has been encouraged to submit their comments in writing via web-based local form located at the city's, uh, website. All comments received prior to 3:00 PM were forwarded unedited to the Planning Commission. And Amy, we, the ones you sent out today are the only ones we have received, correct?
Correct. We have received one additional one since I did submit it to you, but for, uh, Still, Still Meadow Drive, so when that item comes available, I can present it.
Okay, thank you. Um, all documents, all comments received will be delivered to City Council when the item advances. All comments received will be made available to the public if requested. Relative to voting, all votes will be voice votes after proper motions are made and consistency statements are read into the record. The Chair will state the outcome of the vote and the action. Rezoning requests that receive an unfavorable recommendation from the Planning Commission may be appealed by the applicant to the Wilmington City Council. Appeals should be in the form of a letter submitted to the city clerk within ten days of tonight's hearing. Any item that is appealed will tentatively be heard by City Council at the February 18th At that point, we will now, we will now move on to, um, where am I? Get there. At that point, we now move on to approval of the minutes from, from our meeting last month. Has everybody had a chance to, uh, look at the, the minutes? And, you know, are there any additions, deletions, corrections? Need a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting as, uh, currently standing.
Have a second? I have a motion from Commissioner Adams, a second from Commissioner Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved from last, from last meeting. Um, at that point, we will move right on to new business. The first item tonight is an LDC amendment, amend City Code Chapter 18 to revise the use standards for commercial parking lots in the, uh, in the L1 District. And Travis Henley will be presenting this to the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, good evening and thank you. Um, just a little bit of background. Maximum street frontage requirements are designed to limit the visibility of surface parking lots from the street and increase the walkability, visual, uh, interest of our corridors. Under the current, uh, language within the Land Development Code, wherever a surface commercial parking lot is permitted, it is subject to a 75-foot maximum street frontage as denoted by the C that you can see, uh, within the excerpt from the Universal Use Table. That standard, however, does not apply to parking lots incidental to, uh, another primary use like an office building or anything like that. On the screen is a diagram of how street frontage is calculated. Uh, the measurement is taken from the front setback line. And under current code, again, any, um, anywhere in which a surface commercial parking lot is, uh, permitted, uh, this dimension must be less than 75 feet. Uh, the original proposed amendment would have increased this maximum street frontage to 325 feet in the light industrial zoning district and only the light industrial zoning district. Uh, this is the proposal that was, uh, shown in your packet. There are also a host of other standards within Section 18-132 related to parking structures and decks. Those standards are all unaffected, uh, by the proposed amendment in front of you. As, uh, the Commission was previously made aware, um, through further review of the case, it was determined that the original proposed language, uh, did not actually meet the intent of, of what the applicant was hoping to accomplish. Uh, the reason for that is that street frontage is calculated cumulatively for the entire use. Um, so example, if you, if you look at the diagram on the screen, each of those individual street frontages would cumulatively add up to the, um, to be how you would measure the street frontage standard. Uh, so things like corner lots or other lots with, uh, multiple street frontages, uh, would not be allowed to, or would be subject to a much tighter standard. So, uh, based on that, um, determination and through consultation with the applicant, uh, an alternative, uh, proposed amendment, uh, is being brought forward tonight, which still is only subject, or only talking about the light industrial zoning district, but instead of changing the maximum street frontage, it simply removes a maximum street frontage from the amendment. Uh, on the screen, uh, is a map of all properties within the city limits currently zoned, uh, light industrial. Uh, those are shown in green. In reviewing the proposal, staff finds that the predominant development pattern and uses allowed within the light industrial district do not necessitate the 75-foot maximum street frontage standard. Uses found within the district can and often are quite large and includes things, you know, like lay-down yards or other expansive, open-air uses, similar in impact to surface commercial parking lots, but that aren't held to any sort of maximum width standard. Additionally, any surface commercial parking lots would still be subject to the same landscaping standards that are generally-
And go back to your, yeah, this one is good. No, I'm sorry. Back to the one with the wheel on it.
I'm sorry.
Back to the, to the slide with the wheel on it.
Oh.
Yeah, there you go. It says the development pattern and uses in the, the light industrial district do not necessitate the 75-foot street frontage standard. So does that say it, or it is, or it is, or it is, shouldn't be bound by it? I mean, what are, what are you trying to say here?
Uh, staff finds that the, the need for that standard in the light industrial district is not there. There, there is not-
So it's, it's a bigger need, or it's just, there should be no restriction?
There should be. The staff finds that there should, uh, there should not be a restriction.
Okay. Um, I, I'm okay for, for now. Commissioner Adams?
Could you go back a couple of slides that had the different, uh, zoning categories that were all listed together? So would the 75-foot maximum still apply to industrial as well? Because all lay-down yards, big surface lots, all of those things that you described as part of light industrial, I think, would be very prominent in industrial zones too. So, light industrial in this, if we accept this, would be less restrictive than, or, yeah, than industrial?
That is the case. Uh, in, in conversations with the applicant, it was determined that the original proposal was intended to be as narrowly tailored as possible. Certainly, you are correct that industrial is more intensive than light industrial, and if the Planning Commission wanted to offer an alternative amendment to include industrial, I think we would be supportive of it under the same reasoning as well. Thank you.
Mr. Woodruff?
Just curious, in the, uh, info we got in the packet, there's just a couple of references. One was Greenfield Street, and another referenced employee parking. Is there an identifiable point? I mean, where is this property that needs this?
I, I would defer to the applicant on the specifics of the property that the amendment would apply everywhere that is-
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, in the information we got, it referenced those two things that made me curious. Um, it just referenced around Greenfield Street and then talked about employee parking. And I'm just wondering where, how narrow is the focus that's really needed to accommodate somebody's need?
I, I would defer to the applicant to talk to the specifics about any site. Thank you.
Commissioner Collier?
Travis, talk about the landscape, uh, the landscaping buffers that would still apply to these parking lots. I presume we still have the same screening requirements, um, direct headlights, that kind of stuff?
Uh, yes, that's correct. I would defer to some of my staff members to talk about the specifics of those standards, but it, or it is those screening requirements that I was referencing.
That, that is correct. There would be no change to any of the required landscaping for, for parking lots, including screening, buffering, uh, landscape aisles, that sort of thing.
And is it, um, is it even feasible for us tonight to ask that this be applied to the industrial zoning district as well?
The, the Planning Commission can forward, uh, a recommendation that can include the industrial districts and make that part of their recommendation, and it would be up to council whether they want to include it or not.
Okay, all right, great.
Yes, sir.
Great. Yeah, I think as long as the landscaping buffers are the same, uh, I agree that 75 feet may be a very restrictive, uh, width for industrial-type users. Um, the 325 kind of gave me a little bit of a pause. Uh, right now, it's unlimited if we agree with it this way, but, uh, I, I don't necessarily think there's going to be a, a ton of 325-feet-wide, um, parking, commercial parking spaces, so. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Um, I guess my question is, has this come up before? Is, did this project trigger it? Um, have we had problems with this on other sites?
I'll defer to staff who have been with the city longer.
This is a provision when the new code was adopted in 2021, and to my recollection, this is the first time it's come up.
Commissioner Lennon?
The only thing that makes me nervous about this is it would be universal, so we don't know what we don't know. Can you go back to the map that showed the... So, what happens if somebody rezones a piece LI? Then there would be no restriction, right?
Correct.
That's the only thing that kind of gives me pause.
So basically, so, no, you're on a good point. So this basically, uh, if adopted, would be a change to the code that said, that would stay with the code wherever it ultimately is, is adopted?
Yes, sir.
So if Kmart got rezoned to light industrial?
That, that is accurate. Yes, sir.
It's the most egregious exam, not egregious to whoever the property owner is, but that's the-
Obvious.
-one I could think of, yeah. Yeah.
And to Commissioner Lennon's point, though, I think the, uh, the other standards in light industrial, the specific design standards, would prohibit, um, some of what I think, uh, that his concerns are. Is that correct, Brian?
Uh, if you rezoned at LI, it would be subject to, to the standards, and it would include this, so a commercial parking lot would be allowed without a frontage maximum. Um, again, the landscaping, all those standards would still apply, but in essence, you would still be allowed to have a commercial parking lot if this were to be approved, and that was something that was rezoned.
And that would be, you, you're, we're talking about it if it's a commercial parking lot by itself, not a, not having an industrial building with it or another use.
Right, there's, there's no use associated with it other than to park cars.
Does it, does it have to be, I'll tell you where my mind goes, this might not be the right example, but, you know, if you, uh, walk out of, uh, Skyline Center and you have those two plots of land that get used for parking, how does this apply to that? That's not light industrial, or it's not industrial, right? Those two plots?
CBD.
I mean, it wouldn't apply since they're not light industrial, but I believe those, you know, and that, I think those instances, I don't know that they've been settled about it yet, so they'd still be part of the, the main center, but if they were settled about it-
It, it could.
Potentially, yeah.
I mean, that's an example of you got this, I guess my real question is, we're talking about a parking lot, does it have to be paved? Or can we be talking about a gravel parking lot?
Uh, any parking lot that can, contains 25 or more spaces would require to be paved.
Got it, okay, all right. Anybody else? Commissioner Lennon?
Is there any way to do this and have a caveat for something that's rezoned LI?
I, I don't think that, that we have that ability in the code to do that. If it's rezoned LI, it would be subject to all the, the standards and uses and, um, prescribed conditions of the LI district at the time it was rezoned.
And in, in looking at the map of the, the light industrial areas, they're, they're in the locations we would expect to find them, and typically, if someone in light, is coming with light industrial, they are going to like areas in the city that would have something similar. So, I, I don't know how many light industrial rezonings we have regardless. Now, there could be. There could be 10 next month, but, um, I, I don't think, that, that doesn't bother me as bad. I, I liked some, somewhat the maximum width, but I think that starts to be something specific to whatever project that the client may have in mind. Um, I don't know. I think as long as we screen it and do the pieces, the plate, things the way we want, I don't think we're going to have a light industrial rezoning in certain locations. Um, the Kmart, for example, I don't think anybody would rezon that, would allow it to be rezoned to that, is my thought. But I, I agree with your point. You're right, it could be, it could be.
Right, it's just the unknown.
Yep, it is an unknown.
Concerns me. Not to belabor it, but what if it was an excess of 325 feet? You had more enhanced landscape screening requirements?
Based on the new proposal, 325 is out the window. Where, where, it could be 500 feet.
I'm not suggesting- I'm just, yeah, I, I won't beat it up anymore. I'm probably gonna, I just, I hate voting for something where we don't know where it could bite us-
Correct.
-down the road.
Anybody else? Commissioner Jones?
So, what is existing as light industrial, this would fall into? So if we have a rezoning, wouldn't this be contingent on that rezoning? It's not like any site would fall into it. It'd be, it'll be a piece of the rezoning because it's conditional.
I, I think what I understood, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if something's zoned, um, industrial, and it's rezoned, or, that wouldn't be, I don't know, CB, and it's rezoned to LI, this would apply?
Right. It would apply to anything zoned LI now or in the future. Right. Unless there's an alternative code change that happens in the future as well.
But we, or next board, would have say-so if we didn't think that-
Only if it's a conditional district.
-project was in the right place to have the parking, I mean, regardless of all the other things that go into it, but we'd still have some say-so.
Travis, thank you, and I'd like to now hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm gonna lower the mic, I'm a little bit shorter than Mr. Henley. My name's Corey Lee. I'm an attorney here in Wilmington, and I represent the applicant. I'm gonna keep it relatively brief because staff is in support of this proposal, and for that reason, I don't want to belabor the point, as all of you have said. Uh, I do want to address the concern that all of you just raised about the general application of this text amendment, and as Commissioner Jones mentioned, and as Commissioner Collier pointed out, any rezoning that is proposed to the City Council where any property that's not currently zoned LI were to have this standard applied to it, would have to have the findings of not only consistency with the comprehensive plan, but that it would be reasonable and in the public interest as required under the statute. So when it comes to the general application for any rezoning that would come before you, again, this would be one of those considerations when you're looking at the comprehensive plan and the applicable standards for that rezoning. So hopefully, that alleviates some of your concern that if there, if the standard is going to apply, you're going to understand that it's being rezoned in, into the LI district. Um, and then concerning the 325 feet and that exception, and, and why the modification, um, what transpired, as Mr. Henley pointed out, the frontage of a property is not calculated just from one frontage. So as you're all aware, a lot of properties here in Wilmington have multiple frontages, and so the entirety of the boundary of that parcel would count against, so it is removed. Not to have a 500-foot-long parking lot and 500 feet wide, but so that when you're counting the entirety of the border, you're not having to say, oh, it's a 2,000-foot parking lot. So I hope that that sheds a little bit of light on this as well, but I'm glad to answer any additional questions that the Commissioners have.
Commissioner Woodruff?
I'll renew my earlier question. Where is this, where, where do you need this? Where, where are we?
Yes, sir. It's 715 Greenfield Street.
Is it the parking lot down on the end of?
Uh, there's a, a parcel that it is very similar to what Mr. Henley showed on the screen. It's got a multitude of frontages where we're looking to put a parking lot, um, in order to make use of a parcel that currently does have, um, a, a center where there's going to be employees working, and we don't have sufficient parking. And as Mr. Henley noted, we think that because of the general, um, dens, not density, but, um, what sort I'm looking for? Um, the intensity of use, maybe is the right way to put it, with industrial and light industrial uses, that having a parking lot adjacent, um, to those uses would be, it would, wouldn't be increasing in the intensity in any way.
Thank you.
Do you want to ask her? So this is the former True Colors Brewery site, 715?
Yes, it is.
Um, was there ever any consideration about, I'm gonna say, having a scalable, um, figure or a scalable way to determine a maximum frontage based on a percentage of total frontage? I mean, I think what struck, uh, to me, I can understand why that went away, but Commissioner Lennon, you know, what you said to me resonates in terms of having absolutely zero kind of restrictions. I, I'm just curious as to what, I mean, what kind of thought did you give about, again, scaling or having some sort of, uh, boundaries on a frontage? Any?
We certainly did consider that, and in discussions with staff, we tried to determine what would be appropriate, but when it comes to, again, the intensity of use in industrial zoning districts, light industrial zoning districts, and from what I'm hearing from all of you, potentially industrial zoning districts as well, we thought that it wouldn't be an increase significantly in intensity to have parking lots. And so some kind of arbitrary scaling isn't necessarily something that's going to make sense, whereas having a surface parking lot in LI would be relatively reasonable. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
Thank you. Helpful?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, okay, thank you.
So, would a LI, an LI zoning request would be conditional or?
I mean, that would depend on the applicant's wish to move forward with a conditional or a general. It, it really depends on what, what, what would be requested and brought forward. Obviously, if, if something came before this commi, this Commission, and you wanted it to be conditional, you could a, ask for that to be conditional.
Excuse me, hang on. Could, could somebody please address their phone? Turn it off, whatever. Thank you.
So we'd have the ability, if it was a general request, to recommend denial, and it could be up to council, and they could come back as a conditional, and we could recommend a condition if there were that crazy example that I can't think of?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner Adams?
Okay, so I'm now even more confused because the existing zoning is UMX on that site for 715 Greenfield, right?
The property that, um, is in question is 715 Greenfield Street, but the area where we would be requesting the parking lot or placing the parking lot is zoned light industrial.
Okay.
Thanks.
Um, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Um, and again, 10 minutes to either side, so at this point, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the, of the proposed amendment change? Going one more time, anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak against the proposed amendment? Again, anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, at that point, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and, uh, any final discussion amongst the, uh, the Commission?
Just for the record, I feel better after the answer to my last question, that we'd at least be able to put up a fight if the strange, strange one comes before us.
Commissioner Jones, anything? Commissioner Woodruff? Commissioner Lennon, I think you're good. Commissioner Adams? Commissioner Collier?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of i, agenda item number one, case number LDC 5-125. This request is reasonable and consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans, is to create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, and the Planning Commission considers this approval to be reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed amendment is consistent with planned policies that encourage the coordination of transportation facilities with the needs of industrial development and the creation of places that are safe and functional. Uh, as an aside to my motion for approval, I would ask that we recommend to City Council that the industrial zoning, uh, classification have the same, the same stipulation.
Do I hear it?
Be exempt from the 75-foot rule.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Collier?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, is the motion for the alternative proposal and not the 325-foot, that it just doesn't apply? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. My motion would be for the alternative proposal of just the exemption from the 75-foot rule.
Thank you, Mike. Um, got that? Commissioner Jones, still?
Second.
Okay. Um, I have a, a, uh, I have a, uh, thank you, I have a first and a second, thank you. You know, long day today. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously? Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a conditional rezoning request, property containing 1.15 acres, located at 20204, 206, and 210 Norwood Avenue from R5 Medium Density Mixed Residential District, Conditional District to, um, oh, where is it? From R5 Medium Density for a Single Family, okay? Um, we'll-
Mr. Chair, this is a modification to an existing R5 Conditional District, so it's going from R5-
It's R5 to R5.
To R5, yes.
Got it, thank you. Uh, Zach Smith, Planner, will overview the item for the Commission.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This is Public Hearing Number Two, a conditional rezoning of 20204, 206, and 210 Norwood Avenue. The site is located along Nor, Norwood Avenue to the south of Allen's Lane. The site contains approximately 1.15 acres. The site currently has two single family dwellings and two lots are vacant. This map shows the general vicinity surrounding the request, as well as the existing conditions of the subject property. These are photos of the existing conditions surrounding the subject property. These are photos of the adjacent properties and land uses. Residential uses are located to the north, south, east, and west of the site. The site is currently zoned R5 CD Medium Density Mixed Conditional District. The site is bordered by R15 and O&amp;I to the north, R15 to the east, R5 to the west, and R20 and UMX to the south. R20 and UMX to the south. The applicant proposes to modify a condition to an existing R5 CD conditional district to allow for the addition of accessory dwelling units to the current single-family units along Norwood Avenue. City Council unanimously approved a conditional district rezoning request from R15 residential to R5 residential on August 16, 2005, for a four-lot residential subdivision. Condition number five of the approval states, "Construction on the subject property shall be limited to four single-family detached homes and shall be in conformance with the approved conditional district zoning plan. Accessory dwelling units were not considered as part of the previous conditional rezoning requests. A modification of the conditions is required to allow for the construction of any ADU." The subject property is in an intracoastal tidewater designated area of opportunity on the growth strategies map. The comprehensive plan supports compatible infill development where it's appropriate that allows for access to services along major corridors. A mix of housing types is encouraged in proximity to and within mixed-use centers as identified on the growth strategies map. Accessory housing should be encouraged in association with single-family homes and new development and also in existing neighborhoods. The proposed rezoning request also provides housing options in areas with existing infrastructure and access to services and goods. Staff believes the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the recommendations of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and that the request is reasonable and in the public interest. Staff recommends conditional approval. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is here as well.
Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Lennon?
I just had one question. One of the comments that we received online, the quote was made, "No other neighborhood has zoning for accessory dwellings." Is that accurate?
That's not correct.
And what is the current status of zoning for ADUs?
I believe R5, R10, R15, they're all allowed ADUs.
As a blanket across the city. Okay, I just want to make sure of that.
Parkside.
Yep. Okay, and then, that's it. Thanks.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Zach, thank you. The applicant? We'll hear from the applicant now.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Cindy Wolf, and I'm here on behalf of all four owners of the subject properties here. I'm going to start off with just a quick history because I think that might be very handy to follow through this. Norwood Avenue has been there since 1920. It was created back then. You can see that the subject properties are to what is the bottom of the sheet here, which is basically the southeast. When the city annexed in 1995, Norwood was not maintained at that point by NC DOT, and so it was adopted as a private right-of-way by the city. The lots were vacant at the time, and no one ever petitioned for any type of public dedication. Not that, it's either here or there, but just a little bit of history, I think, is handy. Norwood remained unpaved until 2013 because the property at the front corner had their driveway onto Allen's Lane, so no one required pavement of Norwood until the Johnson property was being built in 2013. And so the 2016, it is now a paved road. The lots on One Meeting Place were assigned the R5 zoning district at the time of annexation. They were existing, and so the city applied that. However, the city applied to the rest of the property, including this at the time, R15. At that point, none of the lots that were existing at the time met the R15 criteria. One of them wasn't wide enough, none of them were of at least 15,000 square feet. So it so happens that it was me who applied back then for the conditional zoning, and this plan was approved. Since One Meeting Place was R5, it made sense to duplicate that same district. However, since then, these lots are obviously all greater than the 5,000-square-foot. There potentially could have been duplexes, triplexes, or quadrplexes. So that was the reason or the intent of the condition that was labeled on this map for single-family residents only. It was never intended, though, to preclude the allowance of accessory dwellings, which have always been a permitted use on single-family properties. Now, it's a little bit different, the requirements of it, but all of the residential districts, as long as they were single-family, had the ability to have accessory dwellings if they met another set of criteria. So obviously, I'm the only one around, still around, about when this happened, but the strict interpretation of the wording has been defined today as we need to be back here for a modification. So one thing that I do want to make sure is on the record is that over the course of time since 2005, and when these lots were on a concept plan, there have been slight variations and a recombination of lot boundaries. So, you know, one of the owners had said, hey, you know, we're not, example, Lot 1, which is at the top, you can see how their house is over the original concept lot. But overall, we have four lots. They are all relatively speaking in, close to what the concept plan showed originally. So the requested modification is just to allow the ability for these property owners to develop an accessory dwelling on their property, just like any other single-family property in the city, as Zach pointed out, if they desire and only if it meets all the other requirements of the code. One thing that occurred a few years back was that the property owners along there sort of created a declaration and restricted covenants, number one, so that all four were responsible for maintenance of the private access easement. But because they were creating the declaration, they went ahead and did the usual types of things that just protect a community. So one of, number one, was that each property would be restricted to one single-family residence. That would have been a city requirement regardless. But at that time, I don't think they realized at all that accessory dwellings weren't allowed. They just, none of them, the two that had built had no desire at that point. But this was a provision, and it is recorded in the registry. But then they also took advantage of that, not took advantage, but made sure that then short-term leases were not permitted. It states that none of the properties shall be leased or rented for any purpose for a term less than 30 days. So that's number four. And then, of course, as I said, the maintenance of the road itself. So with that, we certainly appreciate the staff's positive recommendation, and we hope that you'll agree that this modification to allow the accessory dwellings in these units, if they were desire and if they met the criteria of the code, would be approved based upon the support of the Create Wilmington policies and strategies. Now, that being said, I know there's been a lot of conversation about this and maybe some misunderstanding. And so I'm sort of prepared to put, shed a little bit of light on some of the comments that have been made. What started all of this is a current, a current property owner that is building now. And this is the home and the accessory building that he is creating. I apologize that this was the exhibit from the community information meeting. At that point, and our intent, his intent, would be to have an accessory dwelling above the garage if this is approved, this modification. So he is not building an accessory dwelling today. This is the building. It's already been under construction. It meets all of the criteria for an accessory structure, a detached garage. It has the bottom for three cars and potentially, I guess, a golf cart. The top has no utilities. It has no plumbing or anything like that. But it is space that is legal under the accessory structure requirements. It could be used for an office. It could be used for a playroom for the kids. But he would eventually like to the ability to have an accessory dwelling unit. That's what this is all leading towards. So that is the footprint. These are the elevations of that building. And as I said, the inspections office has granted it the permit. It's under construction. So one of the things had to do with its location. It's an accessory structure. Accessory structures are required to be a minimum of five foot off of rear and side property lines. This happens to be six foot off the back property line, and the fence that you see is actually owned by the adjacent properties, and you can see that it's on their property. The red line is the boundary and applicable to the setbacks, but the fence is slightly off that line for whatever reason. The other was had to do with stormwater. All four or six of the properties that bound this lot drain into this lot. So, and they do not drain through. So nothing that my client is doing in his construction is damming up or having any effect on other people's drainage. But as a case in point, he obviously wants to protect himself. You can see where the finished floor is on the concrete foundation. And so it is his intention in this area to create some type of attenuation facility or basically a small shallow pond so that he doesn't have any problem with all of the drainage that comes over onto his property. That was it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure there may be after comments might be made.
Commissioner Adams?
I messed it up.
This might be a question for staff, but what triggers the definition of an accessory structure becoming an ADU? Is it kitchen and bathroom? Or what specific things trigger that?
Kitchen.
Kitchen, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lennon?
I just want to clarify. So you're here on, because you had agent forms in here for all four owners.
When we all talked at the community information meeting, obviously, his neighbors, if you will, were there also. And initially, I could have just submitted for him, but then Mr. Johnson and Ms. Summerlin obviously has a vacant lot. It makes sense that they were all party to it. They were certainly all party to the declaration and the agreement that runs with the land, no matter who the owners are. So I could viably see anyone who bought the Summerlin property and building a house, perhaps. Mr. and Mrs. Toops really don't have any room to put one, but you can't discount interior and attached accessory dwellings. If they wanted to turn their garage into an accessory dwelling, that interior, I'm sorry, an attached accessory dwelling. So that's why they all decided to become party to it.
Can you go back to the declaration page, please? So one of the comments that came in also online referenced the short-term rental issue.
Absolutely.
So thank you for bringing that up. I just want to be clear. It says none of the properties, not none of the accessory dwelling units, right?
Well, I think this is any of the properties. So yes, houses or any accessory dwellings that may result.
Correct. Because the complaint specifically was these homes to operate as short-term rentals could be catastrophic. These homes could be ADUs. These homes could be the existing single-family or to-be-built single-family. But bottom line, short-term rentals are prohibited in either.
By the neighbors themselves.
Correct. Okay. And that document, as you said, travels with the land, not with the existing owners?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
And there is a reference to that, I think, in the small print that I've left on the sides. That is a typical declaration.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Cindy, oh, Commissioner Woodruff?
I thought I read somewhere that three of the lots were subject to something which meant, and there's four lots there. Bad recollection?
I'm sorry.
I mean, that three lots were subject to some restriction and maybe the short.
No, all four lots had the star right below the lot area, if you note here on the orig- whoops, on the original, that said, "Single-family residents only." So that's why we're making.
Okay, but there's not one of those four lots that's not subject like everybody else for some reason?
No. The only odd thing about those conditions was that Lot 4 had to have the expanded setbacks. There were several conditions, and all of those have been acknowledged.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm available.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing. And again, same rules apply. We'll listen to the affirmative parties first, the opposed second, each one with a 10-minute time limit. At this point, I'll ask if there is anyone in support of this project that would like to come forth and make any remarks. Again, anyone that wants to speak in favor of the project? Okay. Then is there anyone like to speak in opposition to the project? Please come forth. Ask you to state your name and address and.
Good evening. Yes, sir. Jay Antune, 1812 Elise Lane.
And a little closer to the mic.
1812 Elise Lane. I'm Jay Antune, in opposition to the ADU rezoning.
Okay.
What I am concerned about is some of the unknowns you mentioned with the previous approval that you did on property number one, that the unknowns of the use of the ADUs is what concerns, I think, the adjoining neighbors. The homeowner's resolution that she showed does have some guidance about the existing homes. It's not very well-written what could be done with the use of the ADUs if they're allowed to be short-term rentals or not. I couldn't really get any clarity on how they would be used. The homes seem to be very clear in that homeowner's guidance, but short-term, traditionally, most of the properties that allow ADUs have some restrictions on the terms of usage. This is very narrow with a one-month usage. I would like to see something more extensive than that, six months or so. If there's an addendum to that homeowner's agreement that would transfer with the property, not with the homeowner's addendum, I would be more comfortable in approving this. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It kind of goes back to your first thing you brought up, again, with the parking. What is the intent, the unknown intent? That's what concerns me. I can't definitively say they're not going to lease these out on a short-term basis, being short-term maybe one month. It's very short. If I knew it was going to be a six-month permanent resident or longer, I would be much more comfortable with those ADUs. And that's why I'm opposed. One of the reasons I'm opposed. It gets into the traffic flow on that street, if there's large numbers of people renting those, in addition to the current homeowners. You saw how narrow these streets are if emergency services or something would be needed. That raises a concern of why I want to limit this use to more long-term for these properties. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the project? Anyone else like to speak to the project in general? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and then I'll give the applicant a chance to address anything that she's heard.
Thank you. As I said, I mean, the four owners refer immediately upon questions having to do with short-term rentals to the document that they created. And they're, believe me, they don't want anyone, I mean, he's the only one that would potentially, at this point, have an accessory dwelling, and they would be adverse to any type of short-term rental based upon that declaration, and they would have valid civil suit ability to come against him. So, I mean, I feel like they have everything covered. They feel like they have everything covered. And the wording on that basically said, "None of those properties could be used for short-term rental."
And again, your position is that properties is defined as the house and an additional dwelling unit?
Absolutely.
That would fall into that definition. Commissioner Lennon?
I was just kidding. I hate to ask, can you still go back to that page? Do you have that ability? I'm assuming properties is defined in this declaration. I think it was.
It's a fairly short declaration.
No, I know. I was impressed. It was very short.
But properties, I mean, property is the physical here. Each property comprising the properties shall be limited to one single-family residence and one accessory. and one accessory dwelling as currently defined by the ordinance of the City of Wilmington. No duplexes. So, they, they've covered all of that. Then, none of the properties, and that is the capitalized property.
That's my point. Yeah. So, properties is capitalized, which means it's a defined term, and it's previously defined as the parcel, basically.
That's my understanding.
Sorry, he's trying to help clarify. Where is it? Three lots.
It also prohibits fractional leasing or rental. So, I think that would cover any type of, the property is in total.
I was going to say, I deal with this a lot, and that is one of the best-written paragraphs because it, but it addresses, you know, basically like subordination or franchising where somebody comes in and does a master lease and then, and it prohibits that the way I read it. I'm not a lawyer, but that's the way I read it.
Cindy, I'm just, I'm looking, struggling with this, the one that's up there. But, I mean, were there only three property owners that were signatories to this agreement, restrictive covenant?
At the time, yes, because Ms. Summerlin owned the property that my client has purchased.
Okay. I say, I didn't know.
Yeah, that's why there were only three. I got you. But he had to sign on basically to that maintenance agreement based upon that second property that she owned at the time.
He bought it subject to the restrictive covenant.
Correct.
I got you.
I'm going to play devil's advocate with you and ask you to, in your response, consider what, you know, things you're hearing. As you just said, you know, if I understood it right, at the beginning, there were three property owners. The fourth property owner is the, is the person that now is under construction and has the building in the back.
Lot number three.
Okay. Refute what I'm about to say. Get me comfortable that this entire discussion is nothing more than to, to basically give permission to something that's really already underway happening. I realize there's no plumbing or anything yet, but I look at this, when I was out there, I mean, I stared at this for half an hour when I was out there, and I just can't shake that we're sitting here, this is, this is a, I don't mean this accusatory, that this is not anything more than exercise to gain permission or to, or to gain forgiveness for something that's already happening.
I would not say it's to gain forgiveness. Absolutely not. Because he, it's a legal accessory structure. The only difference is he won't put, he won't be able to put a kitchen in it.
Right.
If this does not, if this is not modified.
I understand.
He certainly would love to put a kitchen in it and have that availability.
And that, and that's why I'm feeling like that's really wild.
But he's doing the right thing. He came, we're doing this ahead of time.
Yeah, I hear you.
He's not asking for forgiveness. And if it, if it weren't to be modified, the public would have the ability to lodge a complaint if they found that people were living in it, kitchen or no kitchen.
Okay. Commissioner Lennon?
Just to sort of, in between those two things, I mean, the owner of Lot 3 had to go get a building permit.
Correct.
Okay. And part of that building permit is zoning review?
Yes.
Okay. So, that accessory building, structure was obviously within the permit documents and obviously reviewed, and I'm assuming had to prove to somebody at some point that it didn't fall into an unallowed use, which at the time was the ADU?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, that's why plumbing and plumbing permits have not been pulled for that back building yet.
Okay. Thank you.
And this area has several houses, Edgewater, that has accessory structures.
Structures or accessory?
Dwellings.
Dwellings.
Yeah.
With kitchens.
Sprinkled around here.
A friend that lives in one. I traveled to Charleston for three years for work and got tired of staying in a hotel. And Ion is a great example, new urbanism. I'm a fan and great neighborhood. The owners had a lot of say-so. I, first time stayed three months, second time, a different house, six months. It's, you know, it's, it's not that we hadn't seen this. Parkside, the builders in Parkside were required before it was built to go take a bicycle tour of Dewanee's neighborhood, Ion. And I think this is a great example. And even though it's four lots, wish it was 50, but you know.
Anyone else? Mr. Woodruff?
One more thing. Cindy, I noticed the recommended conditions from the staff, I mean, it's one of the longest lists I've ever seen.
Well, because those were the original conditions in 2005. So, most of them have already been checked off the list. What happened was Lot 1 dedicated five feet of extra land to Allen's Lane. They paved Norwood. I mean, so, the conditions, since we're only really modifying the concept plan and one condition, they remain the same. And I'll let staff address that, but I had asked the same thing.
Okay. I just want to be sure that the applicant is in full agreement with however many there are. I mean, there's like 14 total.
Well, and they're sort of after.
As long as you're in agreement with it, fine with me.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Cindy, do you think your applicant is willing to extend that 30-day period to, say, 90 days? Does that make everyone feel better? I think it sounds like the rental part is what everyone's objecting to or potential rental.
Well, and I defer to the attorney. I mean, I guess as a condition of your approval, you could add that I would sort of, I mean, four Lot 3, or I guess I don't know how you would do that without trying to force the four of them to record a new declaration. And that seems a little, I don't know. It just seems unnecessary.
And we recorded the declaration February of '24. Is that, was that added at that time? Was that clarification added at that time?
No, that was the first period of the declaration, actually. Apparently, they just all lived kumbaya for a long time and decided to put it in writing.
Okay. And, and I think a couple of the commissioners were talking about the, the original number of lots has always been four lots. There just happened to only be three property owners in the beginning, correct?
That is correct.
But there were always four lots. So, when Lot 3 or whichever was sold, it became four property owners.
And as I said, there was some trading and moving of lot lines, but still, it is only the four lots.
Commissioner Lennon?
I just have a question for the attorney. Absent restrictive covenants for an HOA or POA, are there, does the city have any requirements as to number of nights for an ADU or short-term rentals?
I'll let staff, Brian.
There'd be no restriction on whether it could be operated as a short-term rental based on city code.
So, night, night by night?
I didn't hear you.
Night by night? I mean, I could stay there tonight, you could stay there tomorrow night.
Short-term rental is as short a term as you want, I would think.
Okay.
But, but again, that would be in violation of the recorded protective covenants, which are a private.
That, that's why I said absent, absent any restrictive covenants, this overall in the city, I guess my point is at least, at least they do have some guardrails here, I think, which were good foresight.
I mean, I, I feel like I'd be authorized to say if, excuse me, a condition of the modification could be the, like I said, the 90 days. I don't think, and I don't believe anything, one would have a problem. We would accept a condition that this board made. That way, the city would have some teeth in enforcing it. The city can't, based upon what I understand, all of the state statutes that just said, hey, you guys can't monitor short-term rentals, when all this came up, what, five, eight years ago? But as a conditional district, we have that set of, what, eight, nine conditions or whatever. We would accept a condition that said, "No term rentals less than 90 days." I would hesitate to go any longer than that unless I was authorized, but I think that is acceptable.
I'm only speaking for myself. I think that'd be great, and I think that helps address some concern. But to be clear, that would be a recommended condition. We're not, we can't condition them to go back and change the declaration.
Right. That's what I'd hesitate.
So, that would be a zoning condition if approved by council?
And my purpose in that is if it's in your conditional approval, then it is enforceable. If it's only part of our restrictive covenants, I suppose the four of them could change their covenants and say, hey, let's all just do it. So, that'd be acceptable.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Cindy, thank you. So, this time again, the public hearing is closed, so final discussion amongst the commission. Commissioner Jones, any comments?
No. I expressed it earlier, based on my experiences, I'm all for it.
Commissioner Woodruff?
No.
Lennon? Good. Commissioner Adams? Commissioner Collier?
No additional comments. I do think that ADUs or accessory structures and accessory dwelling units are allowed in most zoning districts, so I don't think this is out of line. I think they have put using others, the guardrails in place to keep this, the short-term rentals at bay. I would, I do like the notion of adding a condition that extends it to 90 days for short-term rentals. Beyond that, I think, I think that any infill-type development is good, and I think this is, this is done very well. These four lots realistically, if they'd went to R5, could be just like what's above it, and there could be 10 lots versus four lots. So, I don't see this as being arbitrary or capricious. They're nearly R15 lots now. So, I would make a motion for approval of item number two, case number CD-2-705-M125, which is a modification to the, to the previous rezoned conditional district project. This approval request is consistent with the objectives and the policies of the City of Wilmington, specifically this Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan. The Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable and in the public interest because the proposal provides housing options consistent with the comprehensive plan and the current Land Development Code regulations. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommends approval of this request. I would add to my approval and recommended condition, which I think would be numbered 15. Is that right, Brian? Or, so it'd be number 15? And my condition, I'm not sure how to word it exactly, but I would say that we extend the, the short-term rental length of stay to be not less than 90 days. Said appropriately?
May I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Just that leasing of the properties be no less than 90 days? Because I think the word, I think the word properties is relevant here.
Okay. I accept that.
And I think that's in line with the declaration.
Absolutely. I accept that.
Everybody's heard the proposal. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a, an amendment, a proposal from Commissioner Collier and a second from Commissioner Adams. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Hearing none. Next on the agenda is a conditional district rezoning, property containing 27.01 acres, located at 4504 and 4632 Still Meadow Drive, from M10 medium-density multiple-dwelling district to MD17 CD high-density multiple-dwelling residential district for a residential development. Zach Smith will overview this item for the commission.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This is Public Hearing Number Three, a conditional rezoning of 4504 and 4632 Still Meadow Drive. The site is located along Still Meadow Drive to the west of South College Road. The site contains approximately 27.01 acres. This map shows, oh, excuse me, this map shows the general vicinity surrounding the request as well as the existing conditions of the subject property. These are photos of the existing conditions surrounding the subject property. These are photos of the adjacent properties and land uses. Residential uses are located to the north, south, east, and west of the site. The site is currently zoned MD10 medium-density multiple-dwelling residential district. The site is bordered to the north, east, and west by property located in New Hanover County's jurisdiction and zone R15. The site is also bordered by MD10 to the north and MD17 to the south. The applicant proposes to rezone the subject property to MD17 high-density multiple-dwelling conditional district for 56 additional multi-dwelling units and two new buildings, as well as the construction of an amenity center in existing residential neighborhood or development. The apartment complex currently has 280 dwelling units. The proposal would bring the total number of units to 336. The maximum density for MD17 is 17 units per acre. The applicant is proposing a density of 12 units per acre. Additional parking is being added for the proposed development. 144 new parking spaces are being proposed for a total of 718 parking spaces. In front of you are conceptual elevations of the proposed development. The subject property is not located in a designated area of opportunity on the growth strategies map. The subject property is located along a high-capacity transit route. Location-efficient housing should be promoted, encouraged, and preserved where already existing to help supply Wilmington with diverse housing options. The proposed rezoning request also provides additional density near services and is consistent with other developments near Still Meadow Drive. Staff believes that the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the recommendations of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and that the request is reasonable and in the public's interest. Staff recommends conditional approval. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is here as well.
Could you give us some insights on, when I look at the wheel, and I got a gray area that's split, talk, talk to me about how that evaluation went for a minute? What were the, what were you kind of split on?
Let me pull up my.
Sure.
Let's see here. I think one of the issues that came up is the non-jurisdictional wetlands that are on the site. I think that's where we kind of came up with some split policies due to that.
Okay. Okay. And I only ask the question, Zach, because I'm looking at split, modest support, strongs. I mean, it's, it's kind of got a potpourri here. So, that's why I asked the question. Commissioner Lennon, I think you're about ready to ask.
You started it.
I started it.
No, there's, so, that answers my question, I think, because a local media outlet made a comment in their article about this, that wetlands were going to be impacted. But then, in the packet, you provided us with the 404 letter that says there were zero acres of land under jurisdiction of the Corps of Engineers.
That's correct.
Okay. So, can you define for those who, what are non-jurisdictional wetlands?
I'll defer to fellow staff.
Simply, they're just non-404 wetlands. So, the Corps would not consider those jurisdictional, so they're just pockets of wetland areas that would not be subject to 404 standards, which means they could be filled or developed. They're not, they're just not protected. They're isolated wetlands, really.
So, okay, we're splitting hairs, and maybe this is for the applicant, but I don't want anyone to think that I'm in favor of filling wetlands. But if the Corps of Engineers says they're not wetlands, who says they're non-jurisdictional
I believe that an environmental consultant would identify hydroic soils and vegetation types and maybe consider it as a wetland based on that criteria, but they just wouldn't meet the standards of what a 404 wetland would be because they're isolated wetlands, they're not connected to anything, any, any larger water bodies and whatnot.
Okay. I'll just, I'll wait for the applicant to understand the kind of area we're talking about.
Okay. Commissioner Adams?
Parking is always a big deal in these multifamily developments. Would the new parking and the new unit counts, did staff confirm that with MD17 into a t- and the new unit counts, did staff confirm that with MD-seventeen, in totality, the parking would be in conformance based on the bedroom types and required subsequent parking with these?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Collier?
How many additional parking spaces are being added? I, I can, it looks like there are some, but I don't know the total.
Hundred-and-forty-four.
Hundred-and-forty-four new ones are being added for the two-hundred-and...
Fifty-six new units, right?
How many new, new dwellings?
Fifty-six.
So that's, yeah, that's a little over two. I mean, that's a reasonable number for the addition. Okay, thank you.
You asked my question, I think.
Okay, sorry.
It's all right.
Commissioner Woodruff, anything? The only question I have, and maybe it's for the applicant, amenity center, is that like a clubhouse? Is that what we're...
I believe so. I'll defer to the applicant to discuss that.
Okay, Zach, thank you. At this point, I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Thank you. Again, for the record, I'm Cindy Wolf and here on behalf of the owners of Still Meadow Village. Still Meadow Village is sort of a little bit more unusual apartment complex. It's certainly further away from the college, from the beaches, that sort of thing, but its location's central, too. The beaches, the city, and Carolina Beach, Pleasure Island are all sort of part of, I think, its success. Certainly, it's got local shopping within walkability to Monkey Junction, up towards Seventeenth Street. I know that the county has a project underway along College Road for a multi-use trail. This is in the city, and yet it's somewhat remote from the city limits that end at Seventeenth Street. Back during the period when Monkey Junction was under annexation process, and that was then scrapped, some properties, including Still Meadow Village, kept up their hands and said, hey, we still would like to be in the city. And that is why we're here, and you have some of the surrounding properties still being county-owned. But that being said, Still Meadow Village is sort of interesting. Although it's not age-restricted, it has a much older demographic. The manager, the property manager there, has been there for over fifteen years. There are some residents that have been there themselves over twenty years. So it's more of a neighborhood type of community and very popular, from what I can tell. I mean, they always have a good, I guess, a very low non-occupancy rate and that sort of thing. So it made sense that they have some additional land and that infill would make a whole lot of sense in a situation like this. But when we were brought into the city back in, I guess it was two thousand nine, twelve, something like that, the MD-ten was assigned because that's what the density was. So adding these fifty-six units requires the need then to bump it up to M-seven, MD-seventeen, but as Zach pointed out, we're only at about twelve units an acre as far as the actual final density, should this be approved. So this is what we have in mind, a little bit easier to see than the line drawing. We would add those two buildings. The one on the right-hand side is a three-story, the one on the left is a four-story. As far as the amenity center, they have a very nice clubhouse and pool there about the center of the site right now. It also houses their offices. But it is a big community, and they feel that improving it, not only for the new potential residents, but for the residents that are already there, probably a nicer gym, the mail station that they have, you know, those types of things. So that's the purpose of that amenity center. As far as the wetlands go, those pockets that we're proposing as future ponds, isolated wetlands about, I guess, eight years ago now, there were some changes in the four-oh-four jurisdiction regulations. And if wetlands were identified that were not contiguous to larger waterways...
Waters of the U.S.
Waters of the U.S. Were now considered isolated and non-jurisdictional to the Corps of Engineers. So they are permitted to be used, and our intention would be to, I mean, they're sort of soppy, but they are not wetlands anymore. Quite often, too, those initial wetlands that were identified when this project was first built back in the early two thousands or basically late ninety-nineties, the back section was a little bit later, were set aside. But when you build something like this, quite often, it changes the hydrology of the whole area, and so that's what has occurred. This is a picture at the top of the existing buildings. The new buildings will have a little bit, you know, upgraded based upon their, I mean, newer construction standards, newer materials, but generally keeping the same architectural theme that's already in there. Neither of the buildings will be visible from public rights-of-way. So with that, we, again, we appreciate the staff's support. We think infill development here, where the infrastructure is existing, services are already available, this is a great way for housing development to keep the cost down and restore housing opportunities and diversity. Certainly, it's location-efficient housing, and that should be promoted. And I'm happy to answer your questions.
I have, can you go one slide back? The bottom pic, no?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the elevation. So the current is three-story, right?
Yes, that's the only four-story.
Got it. Will that have elevator access?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why they want to diversify their clientele.
And this, this isn't just a picture pulled out of, this is what the, the elevation's going to look like for the most part?
That's what I've been instructed. When he provided it to me, I believe they have other communities which they have used or are planning on using this building style. Now, is it the right dimensions for what we're, it, it looks to me like there's more than thirty-two, eight units on a floor in that building. So it would be a smaller version of it, but the same architectural style.
And that's what I was looking at. So I was asking from a, I was curious about the elevators, and I was also just from a fit for how does it look with the existing cell. Commissioner Jones?
I know one of the emails was asking about stormwater, complaining about stormwater.
Okay, and I haven't seen any of the emails one...
I wrote out there, and it looks like maybe some other, other properties slope-wise. I always tell people, you're going to have to go through DEQ to get approved anyway, but is there any existing problems that...
No, there is an existing stormwater permit on this entire property. You can see that there are two ponds, one in the upper left-hand corner and one up the middle. Those are not, were not sized for additional development back at the time that they were permitted. And so we'd be responsible for all of the runoff that is coming from these existing properties, and that's based, I mean, that's why we based our location of the potential ponds. But the project will have to go through TRC, certainly the city and state stormwater requirements that the city enforces. We have had a pre-TRC already, and it was identified along that bottom property line, there is a ditch. They have to determine where that ditch actually outlets to, and I believe it actually goes to South College. And so that provides us with a viable outlet point for that, because we're not going to be able to get past the existing pond to the large drainage facility that goes out to the river adjacent to Johnson Farms. But it, it all has been preliminarily reviewed, and it can't happen unless those permits are issued. The nice thing I'd just like to point out, and what I, I'm going to be at the Design Adjustment Committee next week, is one of the things this is doing is those are dead-end corridors right now, all three of them. And part of this project will actually be providing much safer emergency services circulation through the site.
Commissioner Lennon?
Commissioner Jones, were you, was that it?
Yeah.
So the two access points are South College and Honeydew?
Honeydew Lane.
Okay.
Which gets you basically out to Carolina Beach Road.
Okay. At least a couple of the comments were around Honeydew, and my, my concern is more about driver behavior, but is there any, anything you have to add to that? I mean...
Johnson Farms is still in the county's jurisdiction. Those are DOT roads, you know, like all interconnectivity. It's generally under opposition, but...
Let me interrupt you for a second, because I, I missed that, and that's on me. So where is the county-city line?
The city has this entire tract, and it has Fortune Place, which is to the northwest of this tract. Everything else is in the county. You got it? Or I do?
Oh, okay. The hand from above.
Oh, sorry, I could have, there we go. That's a good example of it.
Okay, so where Honeydew exits the property, that's county slash DOT?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Mr. Collier?
Ms. Wolf, did you look at taking any density bonus to leave it at MD-ten rather than having to go through the rezoning to seventeen?
I guess...
You need two units, you got to get two units. I mean, did you look at any of the bonus things you could do of things with the stormwater treatment, the parking spaces? Is there anything you could do to maintain ex zoning by getting additional density bonus?
You've gone right past me. I'm not aware of density bonuses for...
I believe the density bonus would only be applied if a workforce housing component is included.
Okay. That's the, that's the only, the only piece that we'll add on now in the, in that zoning district?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I appreciate your, it's okay. I appreciate your, your, your comments on the longevity of the folks there. I, I think this is a wonderful infill project, I really do. I do like that you've put stormwater ponds, or will have stormwater ponds now, in those centrally-located areas on the two front pods. Quite certainly, it's a fairly long run to take it to the two ponds that are there, but I'm sure they're, they seem to be working okay. Parking, the additional parking looks fine. The trees out there seems to be mainly pine, is that fairly accurate?
That's correct. We've had an extensive survey done, and there are a lot of little trees out there, but the ones that are of regulated size are generally pines and smaller hardwoods.
The only building, the only four-story building, if I understand it right, is the one that's by the central pond, is that correct?
Yes.
And across the property line in Mandeline Place?
Mandeline Place, they're in the city also.
It, it, yeah, it's a longer townhouse building, or is it...
They are townhomes, two-story townhomes.
Two-story, okay. All right. And I think, as Commissioner Lennon said, is there any opportunity, realizing we can't do a lot on Honeydew outside of our property, but we could put some speed bumps at the beginning of hours to at least slow them down from the start?
I'm thinking that there were. When I was out there, I don't recall, though.
Then there could, there could be. I, I just, I know one, one person just speeding. It's, as you said, it is driver, it's more about the driver than it is anything else. And it's kind of hard to...
Well, the advantage is it's a T-head. So they're starting at that point. What they do once they get on Honeydew to get over to Split Rail is a whole nother thing.
Yep, understood. Parking, and the new amenity is in the rear, the, the rear portion
Yeah, several years back, I had actually made petition for a building or two in that area, and we withdrew it before it really ever got anywhere, because they just, the economy, whatever it was. But I think these are much better locations for the infill, and, but he did want to include more amenity space. And at one time, we looked at some maybe townhomes back there, just diversity of, you know, unit style. But they determined the better solution for using that, because that pod in there is a little, is the more, most wet of whatever is left over.
Okay. Where the amenity, the new amenity in that central area?
Behind it, behind it.
Okay, all right. I, I do, again, I do like it. I think the infill portion of, or the infill development part is very good. I like the, the addition of the stormwater. The new parking, I think, adds that connectivity within that is certainly better than the stubbed roads that were there previously. I, I understand that there are going to be concerns about Honeydew, but for everybody listening and in the audience, I'm always going to support interconnectivity. We can't solve all the drivers and how they deal with things, other than doing what the folks are probably already doing, which is calling the local sheriff and having them do some patrolling out there. But interconnectivity is still good. It's also, you know, that's another way in and out for the emergency services as well. So I'm, I'm certainly in support.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Wolf, thank you. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Again, same ground rules, but I'll repeat them again. Ten, ten minutes for those in support, ten minutes for those in opposition, and we'll start with, is there anyone here to speak in support of the project? Again, anyone here to speak in support of the project? Okay. Anyone here to speak in opposition to the project? In opposition to the project? Okay, before we move on, Amy, we did get, did we get emails, comments on, on this one?
We did receive two additional comments after two PM, when I sent the notice to you of the ones we've received. Both are also in opposition, and both have addresses off of Honeydew Lane complaint, expressing concerns about the traffic and the overcrowding of the traffic going in and out off of Honeydew Lane.
So again, specifically directed at Honeydew Lane?
Yes, yes. And they both request the need for speed bumps in that area, along Honeydew Lane, and express concerns about pedestrians and children on, in that area with the excessive traffic.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, thoughts, comments? Commissioner Jones?
No questions.
Okay. Commissioner Woodruff? Commissioner Lennon? Commissioner Adams?
I'll just echo what Mr. Collier said. I appreciate leveraging all the existing infrastructure out there, and, and again, the interconnectivity is good, and I'm willing to entertain a motion to approve this item.
You're good? Okay, so go ahead.
Like to make a request on Agenda Item Three for approval of fifty-four, fifty-five-oh-four and fifty, forty-six-thirty-two Still Meadow Drive rezoning from MD-ten to MD-seventeen conditional multiple-dwelling residential conditional district. This rest, this request is consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington, the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan. The proposal provide, well, the Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable and in the public interest because the proposal provides additional density near services and is consistent with other developments near Still Meadow Drive and along South College Road. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommends approval of this request.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Adams. I have a second from Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing none, mo, motion passes. Next item of business is item number four, which is conditional district rezoning. Property containing point-eight acres, plus or minus, located at fourteen Wilmington Avenue from CS Commercial Services to MD-seventeen CD Conditional District, high-density multi-dwelling residential district for a residential development. Planners, Mr. Smith will overview this item for, for the commission.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This is public hearing number four, a conditional rezoning of fourteen Wilmington Avenue. The site is located along Wilmington Avenue to the south of Market Street. The site contains approximately zero-point-eight acres and is currently vacant. This map shows the general vicinity surrounding the request, as well as the existing conditions of the subject property. These are photos of the existing conditions surrounding the subject property.
These are photos of the existing conditions surrounding the subject property. These are photos of the adjacent properties and land uses. Commercial uses are located to the north, south, and east, and a single-family dwelling to the northeast. The site is currently zoned CS, Commercial Services. The site is bordered by RB to the north and west, and CS to the south and east. The applicant proposes to rezone the subject site to MD-17, CD, High Density, Multiple Dwelling, Conditional District for a 12-unit townhome development. The project consists of three buildings with 24 total bedrooms. The maximum density for MD-17, 17 units per acre, the applicant is proposing a density of 16 units per acre. On December 12th, 2024, the Board of Adjustment granted a variance for the removal of one specimen tree and to disturb greater than 20% of the critical rezone protection area for five specimen trees. In front of you are conceptual elevations of the proposed townhome development. The site is located in a high-density transitions designated area of opportunity on the growth strategies map. The Comprehensive Plan supports compatible infill development where appropriate that allows for access to services along major corridors. A mix of housing types is encouraged in proximity to and within employment areas and mixed-use centers as identified on the growth strategies map. The proposed plan provides an alternative for the development of a currently underutilized commercial area. The proposed rezoning request also introduces residential density within a mixed-use center. Staff believes the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the recommendations of the Crake Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and that the request is reasonable and in the public's interest. Staff recommends conditional approval. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is here as well.
Want to ask? Okay, let me ask, I'm going to say things like from last time. Could you articulate the grade of the split? Because you got a lot of modest, you know, just what constituted the split as you guys evaluated this?
I think some of the reason is due to the amount of trees that are being taken from the site. The applicant did work with us to come up with a much more improved plan, the one that was approved at Board of Adjustment. That was kind of one of the things that came up when we were doing our analysis.
Okay. Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, I think you hit on what was going to be my question, because I think we had seen potentially multiple site plans from the, what I think is being shown tonight, and you did go make a point to talk about tree preservation. Can you talk about just a little bit of the evolution, a little bit more of how the plan changed to reflect tree preservation?
Absolutely. The original plan that we received, a lot of specimen trees were to be removed, proposed to be removed. After discussing with the applicant, they decided to go back and rework the plan. And we believe the plan that they presented now is a decent plan for saving trees.
Anyone else for Zach? Okay, Zach, thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, members of the commission. Jake Modesto, 16030, Ochs Glen Court, Charlotte, here on behalf of the applicant. The application front of you tonight is the rezon from CS to MD-17. The applicant spent a lot of time evaluating the site, the property, and looking at it as an infill. We've done, I think, close to, I'd say, 10 different layouts on this property even before it was submitted. Kind of just wanted to elaborate a little bit, kind of how we got to this. Initially, the submission was put in for 13 units on this property as a conditional rezon. The Board, the Board of Adjustments asked us to reevaluate that, look at, you know, finding a different configuration that allowed for the preservation of the actual trees on site. There's over 99 trees in and around the property. So that is the evolution. There was a, we'll call it a, three, same thing, configuration as far as three units themselves around the property, but configured differently with more, we'll call it, a Wilmington Ave facing. But this ended up giving us the best preservation. We're down to 12 units through three buildings. We have two access points onto Wilmington Ave. We have 24 parking spaces, 12 within garage, 12, we'll call it driveway parking spaces. So we're all self-contained when it comes to parking. When we look at the property itself, you look at this zooming out 1,000 feet without even looking at the zoning, you look at this as an infill property, you know, from what I could tell, since the 1960s, there's nothing has changed on this property. It's currently, there's a residential building on it with various small accessory buildings on site. So this property has been left undeveloped since the 1960s from my research, so it is, it's an ideal infill development when you have all the commercial developments around. In addition, the property itself is located within a mixed-use node, and what that does allow, or the way that this node is contemplated within the master plan, it does cause for different forms and fashions of getting mixed use. We were the only, the application would be the only residential development on the south side of Market Street. So we'd be actually filling in that niche of having a residential component within the node itself. In addition to its location, we do, we're approximately under, it's about 600 feet from a public transportation, so we're promoting the use of public transit from our property, including adding sidewalk. We also have bike parking spaces as well, so we fill in that role as far as, as being a transit, you know, orientated or focused development, not necessarily generating the transit, but necessarily creating ridership. And then preservation is kind of the other thing we liked in this property. Obviously, with the amount of trees on site, the amount of specimen trees, we've done our best to preserve what's there. One of the things that you cannot quite see on this development is the reuse of some of the existing facilities. Also, directly to the west, we can see it highlighted, there's an existing storm pond that's used for the advanced auto parts. The applicant is actually working with that property owner to create what I'm going to call is more of a regional stormwater basin. So what that's allowing us to do is to preserve additional land on site for tree preservation to allow us to have a more effective development. We'll call it push closer towards Wilmington Ave. So that is the applicant, the application. We do feel that this does meet the criteria of the master plan and hope you guys feel as well.
Any questions for the applicant? I have one. The pictures, the elevations that you show?
Yeah.
I realize scale and little things may change, but this is pretty much the concept that you're, I mean, this isn't just a picture pulled out of a brochure.
These are the elevations that we're going to take, yeah, right, to the building permit as soon as it's possible, yes. There's no change in it. They've tried not to have a blank face wall, the edge of windows, different, call it, facade faces. So it's supposed to have a little bit of breakup instead of having that blank wall, especially it's what's going to be driven down Wilmington Ave.
Okay. Commissioner Lennon?
Is there going to be any, I'm looking at an aerial that's in the package, is there any way, other than walking down Market Street to get to the shopping center at Carr? I'm just, it looks like you might be able to walk through the back, but I.
Are you saying through the back, kind of the rear portion?
Yeah.
Like west?
Actually, it'd be south, I think.
South? No, I think, so Wilmington Ave actually dead ends across our frontage into, I believe it's an existing construction lot, laydown area, so there's no way, it's all fenced in. I don't think there's any way you can get across through Wilmington Ave South. It'd be directed north.
So, okay, hang on, my directions are probably screwed up.
Yeah, so the way the plan is in front of you is north-south, so heading north would be Market Street.
That's what I'm getting at. So my directions, yeah, so you could walk behind the advanced auto though, potentially, and I'm not.
I mean, you'd be cutting through the woods, yes, you can do that. That's not the intention, obviously. We're adding sidewalk within Wilmington Ave, so the intention, when something happens, you know, on that corner street for Wilmington and Market, that will, you know, have that continuation of sidewalk.
I think it's great. I applaud you for working with staff and working to save some trees and looking at the traffic counts compared to what it's zoned today. This significantly reduces the potential traffic impact, so I think it's, looks like a great project.
Staff's been great too to work with.
Commissioner Adams? How do you handle visitor parking for these?
For visitor parking?
I mean, these are all two-bedroom units. They all have one-car garages. I don't know if you have stacking in the driveways for one car or two.
It'd be one car, it'd be built into the parking requirements, so it's, it's, it's requirements of one space per bedroom.
And I understand that you're totally compliant with what's required, but if, you will have visitors that come, and I just, I want to make sure that you're not blocking circulation or, you know, what's the strategy with that?
So the strategy, if you actually look at the way it's been developed, you have at the end, like, we'll call it turnaround area, that would act as any overflow parking. Obviously, it's, it'd be regulated. These will be rentals, so it will be regulated. They won't be, you know, it'd be, any extended stay would be regulated by the landowner.
Okay.
Yeah, and the other thing too, again, we are within that transit, that location, so there is a section actually within the code that allows for a 15% reduction because we have access, we're not fully compliant on site. So we actually could come down in parking to save impervious coverage, but we want to make sure that parking is there, and the applicant does feel this is enough, even with that guest component.
Anyone else for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Same rules that everybody's heard, so anybody want to speak in in support, like, soon as gentleman's coming forth, so name and.
Greg Young, current owner of 14 Wilmington Avenue, not a resident, from South Carolina, but came more as a spectator, but might as well speak since we made the duration, but yeah, I like it. Land's been in the family a long time. As things happen, it's time that it's no longer a need for us and to go, so I fully support housing on it. Think it's great. I'd be a client as things, as I still do things in Wilmington. I mean, I think it's a fantastic center, a bull's eye location, and again, just speaking mainly because I'm here, but thanks.
Thank you, sir. I'm looking around, I'll probably, it's a redundant question, but is there anybody wanting to speak in opposition? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing, and, well, wait, before I do that, is, Amy, there's no, okay. Close the public hearing and let's go around real quick. Commissioner Jones, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Woodruff? Commissioner Lennon?
Happy to make a motion at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I just think it's a great creative little use of, you know, a parcel of land. These little infill things are much needed, and I appreciate the iteration on the site plan to address tree preservation. And I'll support this project.
Commissioner Collier, anything?
I think we all know I like infill a lot. This is a great use, and I think I would work with, continue working with staff on some visitor parking, even if it's some gravel, something that would, you know, be very non-invasive on some of your tree roots, because I know at the ends of both of those stubs, you know, you're into the 20% portion of some of those larger trees. But maybe if we could do some gravel or even grass pave or something, that we could get some parking on it, just for visitors.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in. It looks on the aerial, and we can confirm with an additional site visit out there, it looks like there might be some on-street parking available on the street, so.
On Wilmington Ave?
Yeah, I mean, I can see a car parked on the side of the street, on the, at the curb, just based on this aerial, but there may be potential for additional on-street parking, so that might alleviate that concern as well.
That's great. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Lennon?
I'm prepared to make a motion if no one else has any other. Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to move the approval of Agenda Item Number Four, request to rezone 14 Wilmington Avenue from CS to MD-17, CD, Multiple Dwelling Residential Conditional District. This request is consistent with the objectives and policies of the following plans adopted by the City of Wilmington, the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan. The Planning Commission considers its approval to be reasonable and in the public interest as the proposal provides an alternative for the development of a currently underutilized commercial area and introduces residential density within a mixed-use center. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommends approval of this request.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lennon, second. I have a second from Commissioner Adams. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Good luck. Okay, that brings us to other business and items from the commission, so Commissioner Jones, anything? Okay.
Glad to be back in reality.
There you go.
Good two weeks.
Commissioner Woodruff?
I'm glad to be here too.
Commissioner Lennon?
I hope you all don't get tired of this, but in keeping with my, what I've done the last few months, I'm just going to throw out some stats. I think everyone read the article that was in every publication, including in the News and Observer in Raleigh about how Wilmington is ranked at the top of places to move by one of the larger van lines. And while that's only one van line, I think it's safe to say you could extrapolate that to others. What was most interesting to me was a recent article by Dr. Machine Gataby. The number of jobs in the area has increased by 19,000 since 2019. It's pretty amazing to think about it. In 2011, 12,946 people moved into Wilmington, moved into New Hanover County, excuse me. 54% of those in-migrants moved from other counties within the state, in other words, other parts of North Carolina, with the balance coming from other states around the country. Fast forward to 2021, 2022, which is the last year they have IRS data for, 14,500 moved within that same timeframe, with 55% of those coming from out of state. So it's completely flip-flopped. One of the, there's a point to all this, I promise. The interesting thing is that the average household income of those out-of-state movers stands at $97,000, which exceeds that of in-state movers by $18,000. So then you fast forward to a report that I get as part of my work, which is called the Shackelford Report. It's a housing report that's done for multitude of counties. It's interesting to look at, in 2019, almost, let's call it 28% of the sales of homes, all homes, new and existing in New Hanover County were under $200,000. Today, it's about 3%. Conversely, in 2019, roughly about 12% of all homes' sales were in excess of $500,000. Today, it's almost 45% in that same price point. So this is stuff that motivates me when I look at these infill projects, that we're just providing homes to people that need them. And the only way, in my opinion, we reach affordability is to put more homes on the ground. Thank you for indulging me.
Commissioner Adams?
I'd like to know what we have to do to get Wi-Fi in this room. I hope that we have Wi-Fi before we move to the new chambers at Skyline Center.
Commissioner Collier? Kind of in John and Spear with what you just shared with us. Linda, this is kind of to you, I ask in a favor, is I know Travis attended a meeting today that I know, if I'd have had the time to go, and it was about housing and, you know, the activities going on with the city and the county and whatever, and I don't want to put Travis on the spot, I would ask you, is, if you guys have a chance to get together, kind of, you know, I don't know if he's debriefed you or gone through it, and so I want to obviously give you that opportunity and come back to us with some type of an update on February 5th, because I think this is becoming a pretty dynamic, you know, situation. So just, if you could do that for us.
We can do that. I was actually at the county at another meeting, so we have not had a chance to debrief yet.
Yeah, and I didn't think that'd be fair to pigeonhole him after the meeting or anything like that. That wouldn't be fair for you guys, so. And so if you could do that, that'd be great. From the commission, I think that's all we have. From staff?
Just a report from last night's council meeting. The council did approve the two zoning requests that were on their agenda. One was the initial zoning for Alexander Avenue, the annexation, and the second one was for Allen's Lane.
The only other thing is, which I kind of chuckled last night as well, was. The only other thing is, which I, I kind of chuckled last night as well, was the discussion around the paving on Allen's Lane. Could you just kind of share with the commissioners, since we had, I think, a fairly robust discussion about that last time together?
You did, and I can tell you that our Department of Public Works actually has a project planned for this month to put down millings. So, they are not putting, they're not paving it, but they are putting down millings to control dust and improve that surface a little bit.
When did, and I lost, when did they, did they have a timeframe on that?
Uh, it's actually scheduled for this month, I believe.
Is it? And the other thing that I think was brought up, that, again, we've had, you know, good and detailed discussions, was the, you know, because one of the citizens brought it up was the roundabout at Independence and, and River Road, thank you, status, because I think, I, I think I heard it was like September, but there was a funding discussion and...
Yeah, I mean, that, that project is a joint project between the developer of River Lights, the developer of Watermark, which is the apartment complex, and the city. We are, all three parties are putting funding into that. Those funding agreements are completed. I believe they're at ninety percent design from what was reported last night, and September was the estimated timeframe.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just have one...
Yeah, let me come back, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, I, I, in talking beforehand, I understand there's a, a new, I know the LDC amendments that we've done previously, staff had reviewed those once a quarter and come forth with any suggestions, and my understanding is now those are only going to be applicant-driven?
Apologize, my microphone has, has to catch up with the switch getting flicked on. At this point, we're three years in to the adoption, to post the adoption of the Land Development Code, so we, staff has ceased our quarterly amendment packages, because one of the things we realized is they are becoming less cleanup and more substantive items, and we didn't think that was the, the right way to handle that. So, these are, at this point, we are directing applicants to file applications. We do accept applications four times a year. The next deadline is the first Monday in April, and that would come before the commission in July. That does not mean staff will not be bringing amendments before you, so there may be something substantive that we work on, that we identify, that we bring forward to you, but it's, we are no longer doing those quarterly packages of, here are all the, the minor fixes and the, and the cleanup items we need to do.
I get, so, would council members still be able to, because I know they've done that in the past, brought forth?
Yes. Council members always ha, have the ability to bring forward a proposal to the council, and if the council concurs, they can direct staff to take an amendment out of that schedule.
I guess my only comment, whatever the rest of, this is just my opinion, but I think the beauty of the way we were doing it is there were some unintended consequences with the LDC initially, and so, the, the, wrong terminology, but the innocent bystanders who fell victim to wording that was later refined, I just, I don't want somebody to have to go through a expensive formal application process if there's, if it's reasonable, if staff's reasonable assumption is, yeah, okay, this one didn't fit in the box. That's all.
Anything else from staff? From legal, anything?
No, sir.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Cut me off every time.
We are adjourned.